April 23rd, County Commission meeting will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner John Pecus. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphones if you would please, and if you need meeting documents, the paper version is next to Commissioner Kelly, and Robert has listening devices for anyone who would like to use those. Before we get started, I'd let people know that Kirsten was unable to join us this morning because of a family funeral, I understand, and we have Don Hanson who's filled in, and he's going to get combat pay for being part of this group this morning, and he has a guest with him that we'd all like to meet.
Not so much a guest, actually, will be probably a more regular visitor than I am, but a few moments ago, Erin McGowens, we're in, Sarah Snow has a Deputy State's Attorney, and she will be working with Mr. Kat Meyer in the Civil Division, and so she's here for a little while this morning, and then has to go to orientation, I believe, but just for the -- for the county commissioners, you'll get to know Sarah very well, I'm sure, in the future, so, Sarah, this is the commission.
Sarah, would you like to say anything or introduce yourself, give us a little background? You're gonna have to come to the mic, that's...
I'll try to speak up, I do talk a little softly, but I'm a 2009 grad of USD Law School. Before that, I did spend some time up north at SDSU, so I've tried out both schools here in South Dakota. I spent a year clerking for the judges in Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, and then after that, I went to Johnson, had a criminal dollar, and was there for two and a half years, and now I'm over here, and excited to get started.
Welcome. With that, we'll go ahead and start with routine business.
First item would be to consider the motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
With a motion and a second to approve the agenda, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes.
Second item would be to approve the County Commission minutes of 4/16/2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the April 16th minutes, any comments or questions? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Third item, bills to be paid in the amount totaling of $548,123.86.
Pay the bills with comment.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Commissioner Barth has a comment?
We had nearly $200,000 towards the highway construction, and another $100,000 to correct here in this bill.
Thank you, any other comments? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Item four?
Item number four is reports, and the first one would be the Interlakes Community Action Partnership 2012 Annual Report.
I believe that's on file, and we don't need to do anything with that.
The same thing. Okay, the second item would be the Safe Home Limited Partnership 2012 Annual Financial Statement, and I believe that's on file as well.
Thank you.
Item number five would be personnel with Carrie Deaver. Okay, item A for Carrie here would be the routine action.
Motion approved routine action?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, does anyone have any questions for Carrie? If not, those in favor, routine action, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Second item for Carrie would be, consider a motion to approve a temporary 5 percent salary adjustment for the Director of Human Services for additional responsibilities taken on for the Minnehaha County Detox Center.
Do we have a motion?
Have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, does anyone have any questions for Carrie or comments? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes, and... Thanks, Carrie.
Item C would be the approval of the 2013 Affirmative Action Plan, Jen, we have Jen Addix.
Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jen Addix from Human Resources. Last week, I provided you with a brief overview of our 2013 Affirmative Action Plan, and we went over the specific statistics of the plan, we identified the areas that are currently underutilized, and our ongoing commitment to make sure that we are advertising, recruiting, hiring, and selecting, taking all of those things into consideration. This morning, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, otherwise, I would just ask for your formal approval of the 2013 Affirmative Action Plan.
Does anyone have any questions for Jen this morning? We all have a copy of that, and the changes, I think, that have been redlined, so I'd move for a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any other questions? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
Item number six would be the application for abatement, we have Kyle Helseth and Pam Nelson, with Kyle up first.
Good morning, Commissioners, Kyle Helseth, the Equilization Office. We bring before you this morning one request for an abatement from Mount Pleasant Cemetery, Record ID 79506, 2012 property taxes in the amount of $431.18. You may ask, what's a cemetery doing paying taxes? They had leased out a building for a crematorium. It came back into their direct ownership, and they have decided not to utilize it, so it is theirs.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions for Kyle? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kyle. Morning, Pam.
Morning. Pam Nelson, the Treasurer, I have two items on the agenda today, the elderly freeze assessments for 2012 property taxes, I have ID number 42560 for $499.74, and ID 56040 for $839.27.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and two seconds, who was first?
I believe Mr. Barth got the jump on it.
I'll pay you later.
Since you're the new clerk, I think we'll work through that.
Thank you, sir.
We have a motion and a second to approve both assessments for item B and C, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes, thanks.
Thank you.
Number seven, be notice and request, the first item would be to authorize the County Auditor to publish notice of hearing to consider application for retail, on, off sale malt beverage, and South Dakota farm wine license invented by Yogi Bear Campground Resort.
Move to authorize publication.
Second.
Is there any comments from staff on that particular issue? No?
They haven't gotten the application yet.
Oh, they haven't?
It's just a published notice.
Then we don't have to worry about it. We have a motion and a second to publish the notice, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, nay, motion unanimously passes.
Item B, under notice and request with the South Dakota Department of Transportation in the city of Sioux Falls, notice of a meeting at 5:30 PM Thursday, May 2nd, 2013, at Explorer Elementary School Gymnasium, and that's at 4010 West 82nd Street, Sioux Falls, to receive input on adding an auxiliary lane to the northbound and the southbound I-29 between T and north of 57th Street and I-229, between I-29 and Louise Avenue and 85th Street crossing of I-29.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
No motion needed, just information.
Thank you anyhow.
Okay, and then item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are no zoning notices, from what I'm standing today. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien, Mr. Pecus.
Thank you, Mr. Litz, this is on DPNO number 20368. The applicant is present, if the applicant does wish to address the commission, please feel free to do so, you do not have to come to the microphone, but I'll leave that up to your discretion. Turning to the application, the Auditor's Office received a request to compromise the lien on a particular piece of property. The applicant are in the process of purchasing a home in Crook, South Dakota, they currently reside in, and they rent this property. The closing is scheduled for May 3rd, 2013, during a title search at county aid lien, the amount of $13,684.89 was noticed against the applicant and his ex-wife. The lien runs from April 1986 through February of 2001. The original lien was started back in April of 1986, in the name of the applicant only, prior to his marriage to his now ex-wife. The ex-wife name was added at the time, of course, she married him, and of course, that means that the liens that ran during the course of the marriage also attached to the property and to her. That was between May 1990 to September of 1995. All liens after 1995 were then just in his name only. The liens primarily were for public defender, court-appointed attorney, and assistance for human services. All the charges for legal services before, during, and after the marriage were just for the applicant, and in two instances, for the minor children of the applicant. No payments have been made on the lien account. The applicant is currently employed, he has an annual income of $35,000. His current wife is a stay-at-home mother, the couple has three minor children, with a fourth child coming soon. The applicant's list assets of $7,010, consisting primarily of their personal belongings and some cash on hand. The applicant has liabilities in the amount of $795. The liabilities are low because they received an income tax refund of approximately $8,000. They used the majority of the refund to pay outstanding bills, and to hold some back to assist in the purchase of this particular residence that they're living in. The purchase price of the property is $119,900. The closing, of course, as I stated, was on May 3rd, 2013, with an estimate of $6,162 in closing costs. And of course, the seller of the property is paying the closing costs, however, even though the couple currently resides and rents the property, they have been notified that if they fail to close on May 3rd, they must vacate the property because the seller is intent on selling the property. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien upon full payment of $1,000. They have stated that they are unaware of the existence of the lien until the title search was done, and all the cash they have available is being put towards the lien prior to their closing. This along with the fact that they have three minor children, and one on the way, would require them to be vacated from the property, because of course, they were told that if they fail to close on the 3rd, they will have to vacate. The applicant filed for bankruptcy in 2009, and their bankruptcy was approved and finalized, of course, in March of 2010. So, I'm going to make a motion, and I don't know if I'll get a second, but I'm gonna make a motion to accept the $1,000, and also to allow the lien to be removed from the property, but still have it carry forward, at least as to the ex-wife and the current applicant, just on the person, but release it as to the property.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, John, thank you for all the research and work that you do along with the staff. Staff, have any comments?
Typically, it's been our experience on these type of liens, and that the title company and the mortgage company wants the lien gone in full. I'm not sure how that's going to work, you know, in person. It's certainly something that if that's not acceptable to the mortgage company, we may have to bring this back next week, Commissioner, just to let you know that, so...
Don, do you have an opinion on that? Put you in the odds right now.
Yeah, I don't.
Okay, that's fine.
And then one thing I would also like to note on the lien is that, and it was on the bottom there, there was a bankruptcy here, and typically, how we've operated before on bankruptcies, you know, as Gordy and Kirsten have told you before, and that while the bankruptcy does in fact remove the underlying debt, it doesn't remove the lien from the records because of the fact that it's a statutory creation. I will tell you that this lien had been turned over at one point for collection to Howgie, and this was one of the notifications that they brought back to us, that they have ceased collection efforts on this because of the bankruptcy, because they felt that that was the bargain collection, because of the bankruptcy notice.
We'll get to it in just a second, and you can stay right where you're at, and stay seated, that's fine. Do you have any questions, Commissioner Kelly? John, the lien is on the house, or, explain the lien to me again, because they're renting the house, they don't have an asset.
Right, right, they don't have any lien on the property, but if they should try to purchase any property, that lien would attach, and I think the mortgage company is actually concerned with the fact that the minute they purchase it, that lien then would attach.
Okay.
Being in real estate, I know you know that.
Let me ask, if they did a contract for deed with this owner, would that same thing apply?
Yes, you would still have that, you would still have that, at least the vestige of what the lien would be resting against the property. Of course, they don't get title until the end of that, because we got what a equitable mortgage back in 93.
Any other questions for Commissioner Pecus? If not, the applicant can make some comments, and please just feel free to stay where you're at, obviously, you've got other functions right now.
Yeah, because you can see, I have active children, so that's the best reason, we just want to be able to get our home, so we can have a place for our children to call home. Our daughters are just starting to go to the community garden this year, and we're just so excited, because we're looking for them right outside our door, and so, honestly, we were not aware of this, but we will continue to pay on this, if you can grant this to us, we, it may not be a much of a payment, everyone, but we will gladly make payments to everyone, so we can have a home for our children.
Thank you. I think yesterday afternoon late, or whenever it was, we also got three letters of character reference from employers, and pastors, and some other people, so I hope everybody had a chance to read those, very positive responses to the request, so...
Mr. Chairman, amend my motion, and just make it for $1,000 and release it.
I'll second it with a comment.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just that these liens are 10 years old, or 13 years old, this applicant has turned his life around completely, and I think it's in the best interest of the county taxpayers that now he's owning a house, so be paying taxes on that, he's paying all of his other bills, he doesn't have a history of debt, all of his debt is paid off, and I feel like this is a good investment for us, we throw them out of their house, so they're gonna be back on the public dollar, looking for housing, looking for assistance, and I think that this is the best way that we could go to help them out, because otherwise, they're gonna be back on our dollar anyway.
Other comments or questions, Commissioner Kelly? Well, this is really a difficult one for me, you know, he's paid his debt to society, but he has not paid, and a lot of, of course, was released through the bankruptcy, but the debt that he owes as a result of the issue. I guess I would rather see them working, if the owner of the home truly wants to keep them in there and help, but wants to get the house sold, and they've been paying their rent all along, I would like to see them work out some agreement with him on a contract for deed, where perhaps, even though the lien would attach, that the ownership wouldn't be there, and the, I believe the contract holder, and I'm not sure of the law, but the contract holder would not be, would not have that lien attached to the house until title is transferred. In the meantime, and, you know, there have been no payments against this, or at least, I think John indicated there wasn't, and, again, it's a public defender and a public advocate, and court-appointed situation, where I think people, that's not a free lawyer, they have to understand, even though it was 10 years ago, they have to understand that when he got out, they probably should have been making some small payments, and I think we'd be, obviously, love to work with them as far as making payments each month, but to release the lien is, I cannot vote for that. Any other comments, Commissioner Barth?
I will be supporting the motion, I was more comfortable with the first motion, but this is another example, though, of the high cost of alcohol to our community and our county. Some of those things in the past were related to alcohol issues, and, you know, the public defender, the prosecution, the judges, the courtrooms, all those things cost our taxpayers lots of money, and we get zero revenue from alcohol as a county. I would be glad to reduce our property taxes, dollar for dollar, if we could get some revenue to help defray those other costs, but, you know, I guess, there is a long history here, but I look forward to this party becoming a taxpayer, and raising their beautiful children, and building a life for them, so...
Thank you, any other comments? I will, as I look at the court records, this goes back more than 10 years, it's 20 years, and frankly, there's significant improvement in what's happened in their life, in his life for quite some time. I have to admire somebody that makes those kinds of changes with or without the emotion of having children here, of course, but the issue is, is that this is one of the positive things that we get to see, that somebody really has made a difference, rather than coming to us with lots of negatives, and continuing that pattern, frankly, and this one has not continued that pattern, so I think if everybody's had a chance for comments, we will call for a roll call vote. And again, we have compromised the lien for $1,000, correct?
On the amended motion.
On the amended motion, so we'll vote on the amended motion first.
Roll call vote, Mr. Barth?
Hi.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Commissioner Pecus?
Yes.
Mr. Bennigan?
Yes, the amended motion passes four to one, now we will vote on the original motion, and we will do a, the original motion as amended.
Original motion as amended, okay.
And we will do a roll call vote on that also.
Very good, first, Mr. Barth?
Hi.
Ms. Heiburger?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
No.
Mr. Pecus?
Yes.
Mr. Bennigan?
Yes, motion passes four to one, you can go and move ahead with your home purchase.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll go to the opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make any public comment or questions on items that are not listed on the agenda, we would be happy to hear from you now. If not, we will go to the agenda items. Sir, you look like you're...
Can I have an agenda, is it my, I didn't mind, it doesn't deserve an agenda.
There's a, you're welcome. Any other?
My items was...
Okay, good.
Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, you didn't interrupt. Any other comments? If not, we'll go to the regular business agenda, item number 10.
Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider text amendments to Section 10.00 of the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaha County to allow a second single-family dwelling in Subarea E of Perry's Plan Development District. Pat Herman?
Good morning, Pat Herman for County Planning. This is a request to do a text amendment. The applicant's own property that's located in the Perry Plan Development District, this is south of Highway 42, right where you would turn north to go to Brandon, and just point out on the map, this is the old farmstead here, and over here in this red area, right in this little triangle, is where they would like to build a new home, but that section in red, if it's outlined in red, only allows one single-family dwelling. So this is a request to change that area of the plan development to allow a second home. This would allow them to move where the old farmstead was, move it to the east, place it out of the floodplain, so it would be an improvement from its old location. This was before the Planning Commission on March 25th, and it's forward with a unanimous recommendation of approval. The applicants are here, but I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Pat on item number 10? Commissioner Heiburger?
Does the applicant own the original building site that's in the floodplain, and then moving it to another area of their own property?
Right, right, it just happened to be that where the line was drawn, it split their property into two parts, so they do own the floodplain land along the river, and then also that little triangle piece that's shown in the red.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly? What happens to the eligibility that's on, effectively, this property will have two building eligibilities?
No, there actually wasn't an eligibility assigned to the farm at the time that this plan development was drawn, but legally, they could have replaced the house because it existed.
Right.
And so, they won't be able to put a farm back, a farmstead, or build a new house back in the floodplain. They're giving that up by changing the text amendment and putting it in the new area.
Were the eligibilities used elsewhere, or what?
No, they were just not accounted for when they wrote the plan development. There were none included because that area was down in the floodplain.
Okay.
So the end result will be the same number of houses, it'll just be built in a better location.
Any other questions for Pat? If not, is the petitioner here, would they like to make any comments? Mr. Funky, you'll have to give us your name and address, okay?
I'm Ray Funky, I live at 48244-266 St. Brandon.
Thank you.
We've farmed this land since the 1970s, we purchased it in 1995, and as it was stated, the farmhouse had fallen into disrepair, so we burned it with the intent of replacing it with a new house. The site we plan on building is more suitable for house and farming, because it's very poor soil where we want to put it. At one time, the house was lived in on the farmstead for quite a few years, so...
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Funky? Hope I'm pronouncing that right.
Yeah, you are.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there one in the audience who is opposed to the petition? We don't need to have them speak, then. Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes, thank you.
Item number 11 would be a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property from the A1 Agricultural District to the railroad, RR Rural Residential, okay, RR Residential District, Ryan Struff.
Good morning, Ryan. Good morning, Commissioners, Ryan Struff of County Planning. Again, this is the second reading and public hearing for rezoning 13001. The applicant, Lindsey Baker and Greg Van Zee, are proposing to rezone 1.99 acres, 4.5 miles west of Sioux Falls, in Section 7 of Wayne Township, and that's depicted on the map in front of you. The request, again, is to rezone this property from A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential, to allow for one single-family home. This zoning land use is generally agricultural in nature, with several residential acreages in the immediate vicinity. We looked at the other housing eligibilities in this area, and found that there were four available to the north, four available to the west, and two available to the south of this proposed lot. All the land in the immediate area is owned for either A1 Agricultural, or is owned RC Recreation Conservation. There are no zoning districts of rural residential in this area. We met with Mr. Van Zee on February 25th to discuss the rezoning of this parcel for residential use. Mr. Van Zee stated that they would like to rezone this property so they could build a new home. However, no one was willing to sell them an eligibility in this area to build their single-family home. The rezoning of this property from A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential would set forth a precedent for the entire county, allowing the petitioner, any property owner, to gain an additional building eligibility by rezoning their land to RR Rural Residential could damage our current practice of density zoning, and potentially make it no longer applicable. This could mean at any time that somebody wanted to build, build on a property, they could come in, apply for the rural residential, and then, in a sense, get another eligibility. Such unplanned growth would place further burden on rural services that are provided by the townships and emergency response teams. Seth feels that the applicant's proposed use does not conform with the intent of the rural residential district or the Minnehaha County zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission considered this rezoning request at their March 25th meeting, and voted 7-0 to deny the request, as they felt the rezoning was not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, or with the intent of the zoning ordinance. The action that we're looking for today, again, this is the second reading to amend ordinance MC 1690, the 1990 Revised Zoning Ordinance for Minnehaha County, action needs to be taken to either uphold or reverse the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny rezoning 13001, to rezone this property from A1 Agricultural to RR Rural Residential. So I know the applicant is here, if you have questions for me, I can help you out at this time.
Questions for Ryan?
One quick question, and I don't remember, what would be the act?
One quick question, and I don't remember. What would be the access from the road to this property?
Well, the access would go off of...
Of the avenue there?
It'd go right off here.
Okay, but that was crossing their neighbor's property then?
There would have to be, you know...
An easement?
An easement or something to do that, because they would replat that with it being landlocked.
Any other questions for Ryan?
Ryan, do you know, are in fact those eligibility's for sale, but the price is wrong, or are they just flat don't want to sell them?
I did not contact the surrounding property owners and ask them why they would not sell. It could just be they want to hold on them for themselves or their grandkids or whatever it might be. But again, it was, just to make that clear, for the 1.99 acres, it is 1.99 because if you had two acres on rural residential, you could have two homes, because it's one per acre. So that's why it was the 1.99.
Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you. Mr. Van Zee, would you like to come to the microphone and speak?
Good morning. You also need to tell us your name and address. My name's Gregory Van Zee. I live at 108 West Beach Nut Street in Brandon, South Florida.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, this property is actually my fiance's grandfather's. She couldn't make the donation because she had to work. And the area where we'd like to rezone to build a house wouldn't be landlocked because their grandfather owns that property, so it would go from that fence line to the gravel, 466 Avenue. And yeah, just, I mean, it's only thirteen acres sitting there, and there's houses surrounding it. Not much else you can do with the property. So I just, we'd like to build our first home out there, so what we're trying to do, see if it works out, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Van Zee? Mr. Kelly?
Does the grandfather have an eligibility available?
My grandfather doesn't know. I've talked to all the surrounding neighbors, and the ones that were transferable, there was only two to the north and one to the west. And I talked to all the neighbors, and they weren't interested in selling one right now.
Any other questions for Greg? Any other comments from the audience, for or against? If not, look for a motion from the commission?
I'd move to uphold the denial.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the denial. Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have a comment. When I came onto this commission two years ago, we had a couple that hardly spoke any English that came here from, they had bought a very large acreage, I don't know how many, maybe 20 acres, I don't remember for sure. And after they bought it, they found out there was no building eligibility. And they came to us, I think, more than once and asked us to grant them a building eligibility, but by doing that, you're basically giving somebody a commodity that they didn't pay for. Everyone in their area had building eligibility's and at the time refused to pay, refused to sell them to this couple that had just bought this large acreage. Eventually, it did resolve itself, and one of the neighbors sold them an eligibility and they built. But for surrounding landlords, that's a huge commodity. It can be, I don't know, $30,000, $50,000 an acre for a building eligibility. And if we just start giving them away, we're going to have a lot of people upset. There's, there are rules to be able to get a building eligibility if you're within a city limits and it's rezoned for city property. Sometimes those things change, but to just stick one in the middle of the country, we're putting ourselves at a lot of risk and probably making a lot of neighbors angry that we just hand somebody $30,000, $40,000 building eligibility.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
I agree with Cindy. I think, you know, this is an item that has value, but that's not the primary reason. The primary reason is we don't want subdivisions popping up with single-spot zoning. If they were talking a 20 or 30-acre subdivision, we could probably look at it differently, but this is clearly spot zoning, and I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Any other comments? We have, any other comments from the audience? If not, we do have a motion and a second to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission's denial. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you, Greg.
Sorry.
Item number 12 is a public hearing to consider a request to rezone property from the A1 agricultural district to the I-1 light industrial district. Do I have Dustin Powers?
Morning, Commissioners. Dustin Powers of the County Planning Department. Today, we're looking at a rezoning that is located on South Dakota Highway, or South Dakota Highway 42, one-third mile east of the intersection of Highway 11 and Highway 42, also known as Iverson Crossing Intersection. The property is currently zoned A1 agricultural and has been used as a nursery and landscaping business in which there is a 40-foot access easement off of South Dakota Highway 42. The land surrounding the property is A1 agricultural. The request is for the property to be rezoned from A1 agricultural to I-1 light industrial for the purpose of sale. I believe the applicants may be changing their request to commercial, but I will allow them to address that. At the meeting, the Planning Commission meeting that was held on March 25th, the request was for light industrial, so I'll present it as that. The current buildings have been previously used for the storage of materials and equipment for the nursery and landscaping business. Many of you probably know of it as prehime landscaping out on the east side of Sioux Falls out there. However, due to the A1 agricultural zoning classification, the opportunities for any future commercial or light industrial sales for the, for those buildings is limited because of the A1 agricultural district. On November 22nd, 2011, the Minnehaha County Commission adopted the Red Rock Corridor Plan for the area in which the subject property is located. According to that Red Rock Corridor Plan, that was drafted by a number of citizens from the area, it was a community developed a plan. Many landowners, business owners, residents of this corridor were part of the task force that drafted this plan. One of the things that they drafted was the future land use map for the corridor, which called out the areas where future land uses should occur within the corridor. The plan does call out for commercial near the intersection of the two state highways and near the, also known as the Iverson Crossing Intersection, but it does not call out for light industrial uses in this area, and it does not call out for commercial uses expanded beyond a certain point. And I'll have a map that'll show that here shortly. The plan also addressed prohibiting strip development, in which rezoning this property beyond what the plan has called out could lead to future strip development along South Dakota Highway 42. So the Planning Commission heard this on March 25th of this year. The rezoning request was denied with a six-to-one vote by the Planning Commission. Therefore, action should be taken today, either to uphold the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny, or to reverse the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving rezoning 13-02 from A1 agricultural to the I-1 light industrial district. Like I indicated, I believe that the applicant is going to be requesting commercial instead of light industrial now. Staff doesn't see an issue with that since it's a lesser of the two, but I'll leave that up to the applicant to present that presentation. So just to give a little bit of graphics of what we're looking at here, this is the site. There's, I believe, seven acres between track one and track two, which is going to be rezoned. Prehime Landscaping also owns, if I zoom back out here, this is where they plant their trees. The total, I believe, is around, I think this is 10 acres, I believe it's around 17 acres. The reasoning, this use, many of you may think that the landscaping business is obviously a commercial use, in which it is, but it is allowed under the Ag District because they were growing the product on their property. So in the Ag District, if you're growing the trees, you're able to have a landscaping business. You just can't have retail sales on sites. So that's where the ordinance draws the line between a commercial landscaping business in which if they were selling their product on site, then that would bump them up to a commercial classification in our zoning ordinance. Because they were growing the product on site and not selling it on site, it makes them allowable under the Ag District. So these are the existing buildings. There's a couple large metal pole buildings, metal structured buildings with metal frames out there, and a few lean tubes that are being used by the South Dakota Highway Department to store their sand and salt under for road maintenance. So this is the current zoning, just zooming in a little bit. We're looking at the, this is the Iverson Crossing Intersection here. We have commercial at this intersection, which that's the Vet Clinic out there. This triangle piece in the Perry Plan Development District is also zoned for commercial, and this is where the subject property prehime is. You have a rubble dump at this property, you have the dairy, Ody Dairy here, and then Merlin and Roy's is further to the southeast. So looking at the future land use of the Red Rock Corridor Plan, when we, when we, the community looked at this area and they planned for this area, they called out these properties here as commercial. They did not expand out to prehime landscaping because of, the further you get out, the more you prohibit, or you allow strip development to occur. And so they called out the certain properties in which they believed was a legitimate amount of area to provide commercial at the intersection. And I do have a few photos of just the buildings out there. This is a building that just has, you know, their, their storage with their trailers and equipment with a few offices in the west side of the building. And then this is just another, a large just storage building in which they stored their equipment and product in. This is looking from the access to the east along Highway 42. They do have a, you know, a good, a good tree belt in front of their business protecting them from the highway. And this is looking, excuse me, that's looking to the west towards Sioux Falls. And then this is looking to the east towards the Iowa border. And then this is just another photo of the, they do have paved parking out there, which was a requirement of the conditional use when they, when they received, when they got the conditional use permit for the landscaping business. And this is back behind the buildings. There's the hoop barn structure that is storing, I believe, sand for the Highway Department currently. And then this is just some of their storage area. They have their different kinds of aggregate stored over here, sand and gravel, stuff they use for their landscaping as well as further to the north. So if there's any questions for me, I can answer those. There is a representative for the applicant here today to speak on behalf of the request.
Thank you, Dustin. Does anyone have any questions for Dustin? Commissioner Heiburger?
Can you go back to that map that you had where their proposed site is and where the other commercial is? How much distance is there between those two?
Probably 300, 400 feet.
And that little strip that's in there, is that where the trees are?
This property here is where the trees are at. They are not requesting to rezone that portion of the property. That would be, I mean, the purpose for the rezoning is to sell the property. And the best way to make the most profit off of it is to get it rezoned to a use that can be used a lot more, because you are limited under the Ag District on what uses can be allowed there.
Mr. Kelly?
I don't understand why the Red Rock Corridor study didn't include, I mean, Ag is not going to be the future of this property. Why did they not incorporate, because it got residential to the east, is that correct? The yellow?
Yes, yep, that's, yep.
I mean, I'm just curious why they didn't address this issue, whether they want it to be commercial or industrial or...
They did address the issue. They preferred that it stayed in the Ag District, in which the current use is allowed. And at that time, we, there was no issues with the current property owners about it being changed to allow them to be commercial.
So their conditional use then do a commercial operation because it's called Ag?
It's, it's, it's an Ag commercial use. I mean, we allow seed sales in the Ag District.
Okay.
So that could be a potential use for this property. Someone could buy this and use it for seed sales, or any type of Ag-related sales operation is allowed in the...
It would just seem to me, if you're looking down the future and trying to give some direction to the commission, why they wouldn't have said this, you know, we see this as becoming a strip mall, or we see this becoming a...
It wasn't necessarily the strip mall, strip development, in which you have commercial all along Highway 42, and that was the purpose of the plan when we addressed it. And that was what the community members thought at that time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Dustin? Commissioner Barth?
Dustin, the, the strip right along the highway, has that got a separate ownership there? You know, you look at the residential thing to the east, and, you know, that's the old railroad track, right?
Mm-hmm.
So does that have a separate...
Well, this strip, this strip here and this is all owned by the prehimes.
Okay.
This strip here in front of their 10 acres is owned by, I believe, Sam Assam.
And how about to the east then?
To the east, all of it.
That's west.
Or to the east, well, east and west, Sam owns all of this right away, just not in front of their property because they weren't able to purchase that.
So what possibly could be placed on those, that land?
Nothing. It's not large enough to, it's not large enough to develop anything. He would have to purchase land to the north or, or something. That was one of the, that was one of the things that the plan addressed, because, you know, what, what can go in a railroad bed like that? Billboards. And the plan called out that not to allow any billboards along this corridor. So that did, you know, and Sam was a part of the task force. He, you know, he was aware of that when all of this went through. You know, for him to, he can't, there's no possible way, you know, that railroad bed's, I don't even know if it's 100, it's not even 100 feet wide. I think it's like 50 feet wide. So there's no such thing that you could develop on that without purchasing land to the north or something of that to, to add additionally. But he does own the access to a lot of...
Yeah.
The highway access, I guess, because he owns that railroad right away.
Other questions for Dustin? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have, I comment, I'm trying to think it through, and that's just that, you know, the red is already commercial. The other one was commercial agricultural, commercial, but it was commercial. And if you look at the pictures of it, it's already built up commercial. It's just a, I don't know if this is the right word to say, but almost like a technicality that it's commercial. It's just agricultural, commercial. It's still commercial, and it's still got commercial buildings on it.
Well, a couple things with that. The red is not already commercial. If we go back to the current zoning map, that's what's commercial. This is a plan, just like our comprehensive plan, but it's a, it's an overlay plan that overlays our comprehensive plan for this corridor. And it's calling out, in the future, this could be developed as commercial. And it's a guide. It's, it's not a zoning ordinance that is, you know, strictly says you can't go beyond this, but the purpose of the plan was not to go beyond that, because then it leads to strip development. Because if you prove it on the north side of the road, why can't the south side of the road do the exact same thing? So that, you know, it's, it's a guide, just like our comprehensive plan, but the only thing that's currently commercial is the Vet Clinic, which is much further away. And that's right at the intersection of the two, the two state highways. And I know it's kind of confusing between commercial and Ag, but every farm out in the county is commercial. They produce a product and they sell it, but they're Ag. It's just, it's just the way it is. And it's the same thing with, we allow certain Ag uses that are commercial to be allowed under the Ag District. And that's because of just the way, just the way this county works as a, as an Ag producer. And so seed sales, we do a number of different, you know, shipping and handling of seed or, or agricultural product is still allowed under the Ag District via conditional use permit. And that's what they did with the landscaping business, was because they were growing the trees on the property and producing something, they were allowed under the Ag District to be a business in the Ag District.
Commissioner Kelly?
Two things. One, this was recommended denial, correct?
Yes, the staff recommended denial from the Planning Commission, and they brought forth a denial, recommendation.
The other thing is, we're talking about light industrial, not commercial, and, which is a broader classification.
And I believe the applicant is going to change their request to commercial here today because of the negative impact, or decision that came from the Planning Commission via light industrial, but I will, once again, leave that up to them. The, what has been brought to you is the light industrial request. If they change their request, then that would be... If they change their request, then that would be up to the county commission to accept that request and then also make a decision on it.
If I may?
Commissioner Kelly?
If another nursery went in there, would that, or use similar to what they're doing, would that, could they sell the property to that?
Yep, yeah, if someone wanted to come in and run pre, you know, the same thing Preheim's currently doing, like growing the trees on the property and running those, those buildings, then yes, they could do that.
Thank you.
Other question? Commissioner Heiburger?
Sorry, one more question. But the Preheim right now doesn't, they can't sell off that property, so they have to move it off of the property before they can sell anything, so they don't have a business office on there?
Right.
You said they're growing the, they're growing the trees on there, but they don't have, I mean, customers don't come there and purchase things?
Yeah, you can't have retail sale, you know, people can't, I mean, they might have customers come to their offices and say, hey, you know, I'm doing, but they don't sell the trees from, you know, they don't have customers coming to buy. And that's specifically called out in the conditional use permit and also the zoning ordinance that says the, a greenhouse nursery landscaping business can be allowed as long as there's no retail sales on the property. So they're not selling anything really from the property.
Any other questions for Dustin? Excuse me. The petitioner's here, Mr. Brockhouse, would you like to make comments?
Doug Brockhouse, vendor, commercial real estate, 122 South Phillips Avenue, Sioux Falls. I think Dustin did a great job explaining the decision of the planning commission and, and he also mentioned that as a result of that decision, we are asking to change our requests from doing industrial to commercial. And we put together just a quick slide presentation, if I can see how to run this. Okay. One of the things you'll see in, in a slide coming up is that the industrial-commercial zoning fits into the definition of the Iverson Crossing. So when you take a look at what's written in the Red Rock Corridor Plan, it calls out the Iverson Crossing area and industrial-commercial zoning is what's called out in that area. The property was identified by the county as currently being, this is what's important, it's currently being used as commercial, and you'll see that in a kind of, in a coming up slide. It's currently being used as commercial according to the Red Rock Plan. Property is adjacent to a planned commercial zoning and the area complements industrial and commercial. And once again, we're asking to change our, our requests from industrial to commercial at this point. The Iverson Crossing, and if you take a look at this map, and the Iverson Crossing footprint that's showing out on that map clearly includes this property. And it's to the right-hand side of the property, but it's clearly underneath the Iverson Crossing. But in the Iverson Crossing definition, this is on page 25 of the Red Rock Corridor, it says, "This area consists of the intersection of two major highways, Highway 42 and Highway 11, which the Minnetonka County Comprehensive Plan establishes as the desired location for commercial industrial development." Called out for right in the plan that, that is what should be there. In the Red Rock Corridor Plan, the county defines the tubed property as having an existing commercial use, that's on page 15. And in reality, going back to a lot of the questions, I think Sandy asked, is a Preheim property should have probably been included in that, in that plan? If you take a look, this, this is how the properties are currently being used, and that's a map I pointed out, it shows it's currently being used as commercial. The subject property is adjacent to the planned commercial. That tree-growing area, which is inclu, one half of it, it's interesting, a one half of it is included in a future proposed commercial area. I'm not sure how they decided to split that, that tree belt in half, but that was split in half and then left, as was said, about three hundred feet from there over to this property. That shows that the planned commercial uses pushes us outside of that. Here's what we're looking at, the Iverson Crossing is surrounded by commercial industrial uses. Changing the zoning to commercial does have, does not have an adverse effect. If you look at the adjacent properties across the street, it is the big Everest, is it Everest? Is that the one that? It's the big forest south. You have a rubble pit on the corner that's being filled in and that'll eventually become commercial. This is a spot zone industrial use, a little bit further to the east end, Highway 42. And this is the current building that sits on the corner where you turn north to Brandon. And obviously, that building will most likely in the future be removed and it'll be a, a more modern commercial use put on that corner. So a zoning change from the current ag use to commercial use is compatible with, with the Iverson Crossing. So we have to reach and rezone it to ag. Questions?
Thank you, Doug. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Brockhouse? Commissioner Barth?
So that would positively affect the number of people that might be interested in buying it, right?
I, yes. And, and to address Dick's question earlier, could we sell it to, or is there an opportunity to sell it to another landscaping company? Absolutely, there is. Called every one of them, nobody's looking to expand. The other thing, and this has, this is not a hardship, this is just a statement of fact, within days of us listing this property for sale, Mr. Preheim passed away. So Mrs. Preheim needed still running the business, but the, the plan will be that, that nursery will no longer be there.
Other comments or questions? Anybody from the audience have any comments for or against? Commissioner Barth?
Do you have Dustin come back?
Certainly. Thank you, Doug.
Dustin, he brought up the issue about where the line was drawn halfway through the, the tree farm part of the property there. Could you show us what he meant there? Right there?
Yeah, so this is ten acres here. And the reason for expanding it out to the middle of the tree farm was because it was consistent with the parcel to the south, which is the rubble dump. So they wanted to make it even amount, you know, because if, you know, if this is rezoned all the way to commercial offer here, which it currently isn't, but if in the future it were, you know, someone's going to probably want to do it onto the, onto the north side. So that, you know, we tried to keep it consistent with what happened on the north and the south side of the property.
Was the Preheim family, you know, a participant in the study?
Well, they were notified of all the meetings and everything during the process. I'd never heard anything. They may have showed up to some of the public hearings that we had, but I'd never heard any specific comments from them about, you know, calling, calling this out as commercial in the future. You know, and obviously, there were the unfortunate circumstance of Mr. Preheim passing away, which, you know, may have led to some of these, the process of this speeding up. But, no, there was no comments from him. But every property owner within the corridor was notified through our office. And plus, there was also public notices and hearings for all the meetings in which the plan was brought forth to the planning commission and the county commission and all the public meetings that we held out there. So there was numerous occasions.
Could, could we go back to that picture of the first building, the one with the small office in that one? Mr. Chair, I've, I've driven into that parking lot and stuff and what you see is what is there. And, you know, it looks like a great spot for a highway department or something. And it's already being used by the state highway department, which would seem to be kind of in violation of what our intent is. And the concrete looks heavy enough to be an extension of the airport here. And I was the one vote that disagreed with the, the rest of the planning commission. And I just see this as being impossible as an ag thing. I mean, potentially, you could put a farm implement dealership here, potentially you could have a big veterinary clinic, but I just see this as being, you know, I don't know if the Prehimes were, had health issues or something that prevented them from participating in the, in the corridor, but I think there's a great argument to be made to changing this to allow for other operations.
Commissioner Kelly?
I have a motion with a comment afterwards. I would move to approve this as commercial. Is that, is there a C2 or C1 or anything, or is it just plain commercial?
Is there a second, Commissioner Kelly?
I'll second.
I believe before you mentioned?
Go ahead, John.
Commissioner Pecas had a question?
Well, I was just going to comment that in looking at the way this property was set up, I, I did follow that, Commissioner Barth, you were the lone holdout in the planning commission. I understand, we give, we give, the planning commission, they're responsible to follow the comprehensive development plan and of course, our Red Rock Corridor as we required them to do so. And the reason this was set up as ag was primarily because it was A1 and they were doing some commercial activities on it, which was consistent with our zoning requirements. But you're right, in looking at this particular property, it was an odd lot. I mean, I remember, I kind of got an idea as to why they probably weren't involved with the, with the study. When this was set up, it was rather acrimonious. And I, I remembered thinking at the time, why are we requiring this outfit to put so much concrete down? I don't understand. It was almost like the poison pill. We'll see if you actually pave all of South Dakota in concrete to get this set up. And it just, and I'm not, I'm not faulting our planning staff. It was a different planning staff at the time and, and some of the things that they were requiring almost seemed, I won't say arbitrary and capricious, because that's another issue, but it didn't, it did make me think it was somewhat whimsical, because I don't see a lot of other activities like this, having this much concrete poured. But in looking at this location right now, I'm sorry, I mean, it's a commercial activity. If you think it's agriculture, try to run your plow through that concrete, because it's not going anywhere. And the reality is that the uses out in the Red Rock Corridor are going to have some growing pains. And this is one of the odd lots that was out there. And so I think that, you know, the way I vision it is that eventually, you're going to have these kind of situations resolve themselves. But we can either deal with it now, or if they don't sell this place in fifteen, twenty years, we'll probably be sitting here when we have a request to do a TIF, to chisel up all that concrete and to silo all the property taxes into one particular TIF district so they can redevelopment the way they want to have it done. And I, I just don't want to do that. I think we should look at what it is right now and press forward and allow them to go ahead and try to utilize it, for I think what Commissioner Barth said is the best use of commercial activity.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, do you have any other comments?
Well, I think it, by not attack, by not addressing this issue, the Red Rock said it was going to be up to future commissions to address it. And clearly, this is a commercial use. Industrial, I would not support it. But it's commercial use and, and I think it's a natural progression there that probably, they're going to have to develop some transitional uses, I think, in that area because you got residential in two areas. But I, I think this is a good tip for this property and apparently, at the time, they did not envision Prehimes having a desire to get out of the business or something when they addressed it. But I think, I think we should support the commercial zoning.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? I will tell you that I need to recuse myself on this because I have a business relationship with my real employer, with the Preheim organization, so I will not vote on this. Any other comments or questions? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve this as a commercial application. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes four to zero and one abstained. Item number thirteen. There's a public hearing to consider a drainage permit application, number thirteen dash thirteen from Raymond Funk to conduct agricultural drainage. Dustin Powers.
The Planning and Zoning Department received a drainage permit application from Raymond Funky to conduct the agricultural drainage on property owned by Gerald and Marie Cooner. The proposed drainage project is located in section 10 of Valley Springs Township and is legally described as Track One Cooner and Helgeson Subdivision Southeast Corridor, Section 10, Township 101 North, Range 47 West. A notice of the hearing for today's meeting was sent on April, April 3rd to all the downstream landowners within a half mile. There are two downstream landowners that are within a half mile of the proposed drainage. Raymond Funky is requesting approval of the agricultural drainage to increase the yield production and reduce the erosion that is currently happening on the property. The tiling would be installed in section 10 of Valley Springs Township and will flow into an intermittent stream that flows to the northwest. The water will flow across land owned by Karen Hildring, which would not sign the downstream waiver, therefore, the reason for the public hearing here today. Also, the water will flow across property owned by Stacy Zomer, who has signed the downstream waiver and is okay with the proposed drainage project. Staff made a site visit on April 3rd and walked the areas for the proposed tiling. Each of the tile lines are being placed in areas that function as part of the same watershed. And according to the certified wetland determination, there are no wetlands on the property according to the NRCS. Staff finds that the proposed tile lines will be placed in traditionally wet areas that function as part of the same watershed, therefore, is recommending approval of Drainage Permit 13 dash 13. So just to give you an idea, this is what the applicant is proposing. Arrow here, just to kind of give you an idea, and we'll see this from the pictures. The property drops in elevation, at least ten feet in elevation across the property, if not more. So this water does flow quickly and it does flow to the northwest across the properties owned by Karen Hildring and Stacy Zomer.
Which one is the Hildring?
The Hildring is the one immediately where the outlet will be going on to. So the first photo here is just a general depiction of the area. And it is somewhat hard to see, but at least there wasn't any snow on the ground at the time. The, the tiling will be proposed along these waterways that flow down to the fence line and will go, if you can see the trees here, that's where the fence line is. And those trees are on the Hildring property, if we go back here, along this waterway here that goes through here and then on to the Zomer property. This is just another view from the very east side of the property, looking directly downhill. As you can see, the elevation drops significantly as you get closer to the fence line, which the outlet would, where the outlet would occur. And this is just another photo of just the topography of the land and how it's all draining down towards the one, where the outlet's going to be along the fence line on the west side of the property. This is from where the outlet's going to be, looking back towards the east of the hill. As you can see, there's some erosion and it gets fairly wet down here at the bottom of the hill where it crosses into, the fence line is right where this grass starts and where it's going to, this is where the outlet's going to be. And this is just looking from the west, east side of the fence, looking towards the west on to the Hildring property. So you can see where the erosion's occurred and the waterway runs across a little bit to the north and then comes back to the west into the trees and it follows the tree line until it gets to the, the Zomer property. Just a, a little bit of information about, you know, how wet it was out there. You know, there wasn't any water running across the Hildring property while I was out there, but once you got on to the Zomer property, there was water sitting in this waterway and that kind of speaks to, you know, the amount of water that is in the area, even though we haven't had the rain or the snow totals that we usually do. So if there's any questions for me, I could answer them at this time. Also, the applicant is here to speak on behalf of the application.
Thank you, Mr. Pecas.
Dustin, one of the pictures, it looks like, at least last year, because of the dry spell, looks like he was able to farm almost up to the?
Yes.
Up to the, yeah, so he probably realized that there's quite a bit of land there that would be nice if he had to get his plow into it.
Yeah, there was, there was a couple of spots, you know, there from the fence, there was probably five, 10 feet of, of grass area, but he was able to come up. And especially even down here in this wet area, you know, he was able to at least go over it with his equipment. I'm not sure what the, you know, what the, the yields were like down there, but so.
And it almost looks like it splits his property in two. I mean, if you go all the way up to the, yeah, look at that. Okay.
Any other questions for Dustin? Commissioner Barth?
On this map here, where do the trees begin? Is that?
They don't start until you get on to the Hildring property.
Okay.
Down here to where the, the waterway becomes more sufficient and where it's a little bit wetter. bit wetter. On their property is where the trees are, along the waterways.
I was just-
We'll have to wait just for a second, okay?
I was going to just say that those trees are gonna be coming down there.
Okay. Thank you. We'll ask you to come up in a second. Any other questions for Dustin? Thank you, Dustin. Obviously, the petitioner is here. Would you like to come forward and make any comments, please?
I just wanted to make sure that you didn't have those trees.
We're gonna try to take turns in this match.
Ray Funky.
Yep. Morning again.
Morning. That property, at one time, had a lot of trees in the middle of it too, because over the years, they just let it go because it was too wet to farm at times. And we had it checked out and they said we could clean it up and tile it.
Okay.
And right now, we're paying rent on five, six acres that a lot of years you can't even get into because of the wetness, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Funky? If not, any other comments from people supporting the program? If not, we'll go to the opposition and you need to come to the microphone and identify yourself, please. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Ed Bots, I'm representing Karen Hildring and my wife, who own the downstream property. First of all, we are not against this project at all, except that we were approached so late last fall that we were not, had time to get our stuff. We plan on tiling it too, but we don't want this water dump on top of our land now. As Mr. Pecos said a little bit ago, it almost divides the land in two. There's this little corner up in, I don't know how to point on here, we might not even really get that farmed. Because, but we've already got, as you know Minnehaha County, this is Glendale County, where, they're backed up up there at the, at the zoning commission. We've got, I've got the permit right here to clean the trees out and fix the ditch up. There's a backlog of about eight months to get the tiling done. What happened here is we were not approached when he planned his project, so we were not able, you know, to get on board. Usually, I've been involved in, I'm a retired farmer, live here in Sioux Falls now, great city. But usually, you get everybody that's involved and find out if they want to tile, and you do it all at once, so nobody has all these problems about dumping water on top of somebody's land. And that's why you have this permit here that was sent to us. You're gonna set a precedent here of allowing people to dump water onto other people's lands. You don't realize how many people you're gonna have in here. What I need to do this, this is gonna come up again and again, that's why you've got this permit here. And I have, they have said, Mr. Funky, we will sign this as soon as we get permission from the, from the, from the, the backlog is about eight months. Now, we've even talked to the guy that did, Mr. Funky, saying his name is Brian Top. He says he doesn't think there's any problem. He's, I don't know what his word would be up there, facilitator. He works with the agriculture department up there to put your thing on top, the pile, instead of being on the bottom. And so we're, we're gonna hire him and everything, but it's just gonna take a little time to get this done, because we were not notified till last year and my sister-in-law, so he came up and gave this thing to her when she'd just lost her husband and it, it's just gonna take a little time to do this. I'm not against the project at all. It's gonna be a great project when it all gets hooked up, but to do it now, eight months ahead of time, we hope to get it done by this fall, but it's, it's out of our hands. I'd like to have it done, we'll do it tomorrow if you, if you guys can get this permission, but it's gonna take probably till this fall to get it done. That's all there is to it.
Okay.
And like I said, the tenant might not, they'll harm, we've got permission from Mr. Zomer to hook into his tile line, so all this water would just flow underground. It wouldn't be eventually. And all I'm asking is, don't, don't set a precedent here. You're gonna have a mess here, here with everybody coming in trying to dump water in somebody else's land. That, that water's gonna dump right there and it's gonna flow right over on top of the ground there. That's what's gonna happen with that water.
Okay.
And-
If I might, and I don't mean to interrupt your conversation, but would you do us a favor and spell your last name? We didn't get-
Bots, B-A-A-T-Z. I'm a resident of Sioux Falls.
And would you give us your address again, please?
4512 South Falls.
Thank you. That was Ed, correct?
Yeah.
It was Ed, correct?
Yeah, thank you.
We have a couple of questions for you, I believe, Mr. Kelly.
You said you were notified last year of the intent on this?
Yes.
So there was time to engage the people. Was there any effort to get back with the, with the petitioner and-
Yes, I've talked to him a couple times on the phone.
I'm assuming that he probably, and I don't know, yours looks like it would be almost routine, but he's probably got it under contract now or the availability of the guys putting the drain tile, I imagine is what you're talking about, the eight months. I don't believe that it's eight months in the Planning Division, is it? No.
Mr. Chair, just a second, please.
He's talking about eight months at the NRCS to get the wetland determination done, because we need the wetland determination done prior to us issuing a drainage permit.
Okay, thank you.
He had to do that with his too, but if we would've been notified at that time, we could've done ours too and done it together. But normally, I've been involved in selling tiling projects, most of the time, you do it all together because it just causes less problems, you're not dumping, you know? You keep everything underground and everybody can be happy about it, you just, you just don't run, you just don't run water on top of somebody else's property, you just don't do it.
Questions?
And I'm not against the project at all, we're, if you just give us the time to do it. Otherwise, now what's gonna happen, now he's gonna, that water's gonna pond there, it's gonna run down on our land. And then someday, it's gonna get hooked up anyway, but we're gonna have, he's gonna have to come up with a pipe. You have to come up with a pipe to have drainage. The end of the tile line. And when, when that comes up, and we're gonna come down here, his pipe's gonna be up here and then we're not gonna be able to hook it up, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Well, I actually was going to point out that the hangup was probably the NRCS and I have been to some seminars with SDSU where the NRCS frankly admitted that they couldn't get to all the places that they need to get to. And I'm sure that their short staff didn't know Brian Top retired from them and so his successor is probably racing around in the NRCS helicopter looking at these properties. So I think, I think it is a serious problem that we can't get that approval. I'm not sure if there's any way to expedite it, but it seems to me they, they did say something at that seminar that they could try to. But I, I certainly understand Mr. Bots' concern about doing this big project one segment at a time and then causing additional problems.
Other questions for Mr. Bots?
I'm basically just asking you to table this for a year and then I'll go.
Okay. Thank you. Any, Commissioner, I'd like to ask Mr. Funky what he thinks about that.
We'd be happy to have you come back. I don't know if you'd be happy to come back.
We notified the Hillarys last fall, December, and they had all winter, I was not contacted by Mr. Bots until, I'm gonna say, the end of March. We're not gonna be dumping any more water on that property than is already coming down there. As far as getting it approved, I realize, yes, they're, they're over a year behind, but you can hire private guys like Brian Top, and I think there's three or four others that'll come in and do it. And they'll, they'll approve it, they'll check it out for approval, so.
Okay.
It's not that you can't get it done, that's what we had to do. We had this, we had to pay to get it done and because the soil conservation is too far behind, so.
Any questions for Mr. Funky?
I guess if I might, then go back to Mr. Bots.
Yeah, you will. Thank you. Mr. Bots?
If, if there was a way to expedite the approval process by hiring an outside contractor, would you-
Very good question, I have it right here, the man that he's talking about is Brian Top. We've been up to talk to him. It's still gonna take a little while to get it done.
Do you have an estimate on how long it will take?
I'm just giving you my opinion, probably a couple months. I don't know. He, he is an, and I've talked, this is the same guy, here's, if you wanna see it, you-
No, no, I know Brian. Brian Top's appeared before the commission before, we know Brian.
We have talked to him, we're gonna hire him. It's just that this hit at a kinda unfortunate time for my sister-in-law.
Right.
And she was not used to dealing with these things and she got this-
Flustered.
She got this paper thrust in front of her to, and kinda, was, kinda get a little pressure to sign it and she doesn't wanna sign it until we get the rest of this done now, after we've talked to the, that's all we're asking you for is a little time, the time that I think we should've been given in the first place to, to plan. These things don't get planned overnight and Minnehaha County's growing, they're, they're behind. That's, even if you hire a facilitator, it takes a little while.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bots or Mr. Funky? Anyone else like to make any comments from the audience, from the planning staff? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm pretty sure that Brian Top is currently working for Brian Hefty and I think that he could be called and get this thing moving here. I'm gonna make a motion to defer for two weeks.
Two weeks? Is that what you said?
Yes, I think that we can get a report back at that point and see where we're at. Spring will come. I don't know when.
Okay. I need a second to that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from Mr. Funky or Mr. Bots in the two-week deferral? If not, those in favor of deferring this for two weeks signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes to defer for two weeks. You have Mr., Mr. Bots. Mr. Bots, you have two weeks and we'll readdress this.
What do you want me to do then?
You'll have to speak to Mr. Top and try to get the contract going and I would-
To show that there's a little progress here, is that what you're saying?
Well, I would hope that there's more than a little progress, but you can talk to Mr. Top and see what the timeframe will be.
Okay.
Okay?
We are, we are ready to do it tomorrow if we can get the approval.
Oh, and push Brian. Push Brian.
I would let Brian know that.
Yeah.
I just think you'd be setting the precedent, because that's what the forms are for.
I will remind you that the forms were sent out probably last fall, but it unfortunately was bad timing for your family, so.
Yeah.
Item number fourteen.
Fourteen is to consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Department to purchase one Dodge Grand Caravan in the amount of $21,241 from Billion Auto in South Dakota from a contract number 16413 competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Kristen Treana.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Kristen Treana, administrative coordinator for the Sheriff's Office. I come to you today to request authorization to order a Dodge Grand Caravan from Billion Automotive. It was competitively bid on the state bid. It is to be used as a transport vehicle in the jail. Probably most commonly will be used for transporting inmates down to HSC in Yankton to make that daily trip that we pretty much have now. So we will be inserting partitions and use it for transport.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second, any comments? If not, I'm just gonna make one. When I had the chance to look at this price and going back and looking at, looking at some of the other ones, it's amazing to me with the new purchasing policy that we established, what kind of pricing we're getting in some of the state bids as a cooperative event, if you will, so thank you for doing that. Any other questions, comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Buy your vehicle.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen, to authorize the chairman to sign a stockpile lease agreement with South Dakota Department of Transportation for property located in the southeast quadrant of I-90, exit number 402.
Morning, Robert.
Morning, Commissioners, Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. South Dakota Department of Transportation has approached the Commission requesting that the county enter into a lease agreement with the DOT for six acres of county-owned land in the southeast quadrant of I-90, exit 402. This would be for a five-year lease at a rate of $1,200 per year. And I would note that, as I was discussing this with the Department on Friday, there is a different amount in your briefing memo that that was 1,200 per acre per year. We are now, we are talking about a $1,200 per year lease amount. So I just want to make sure that is clear right off, right off the top. The DOT intends to use this land as a stockpile location for material that would be removed during this summer's work of rebuilding and redoing the Cliff Avenue I-90 exit. That, at that point, material would be pulled off of that project and then stored until it is reused for the South Dakota Highway 100 project scheduled to begin in 2017. The material would consist of approximately 15,000 tons of asphalt millings and gravel salvage, salvage gravel. We have provided a copy of the lease agreement for you on the Dropbox and as part of that lease agreement, no trees would be cleared from the property without consent of the property owner and topsoil would be removed, stored, and then replaced once the, the project has been completed. It also, at the completion of the project, the property owner, Minnehaha County, would have, would have to approve the remediation or the reconstruction plan of returning it to its original state. Have had a chance to share this lease agreement with Highway Superintendent DJ Boothey, he's out of town on work matters this, today and wasn't able to be here, but he, when he looked at the original lease, he had a couple of specific questions. Number one, that there was nothing in there addressing the, the storage or use of diesel or other fuels on the property during the time of the stockpile usage. And then also, there was no requirement for county approval of the remediation, rebuilding efforts, conclusion of the lease. I passed that, those concerns on to the DOT and I have to tell you that they, they were addressed and had a new version of the lease agreement back to me with, in about a half hour, that had those, those concerns taken care of. I've spoken a number of times with Travis Dressen, area manager with the South Dakota DOT, he's here and can answer any questions you have about this proposed lease agreement, but I would stand by for your questions if you have it for me.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Kelly?
Not a question, but $200 a month, or per acre per year is not a, it's, it's on the low end, but it's not, it's fair rent. This is a little cooperation with the government to get these done too, so.
Commissioner Hyberger?
It's not per acre, it's just $200 a month. The acre part was taken out, so just-
$200 a year.
$200.
$200, I'm sorry, $1,200.
Yeah.
Both?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Department of Transportation. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Robert. Thanks for your patience.
Item number sixteen is the Minnehaha County Commissioner liaison reports. Ken, you came back in, did you have something on this?
Does anyone else have any liaison reports? New business, item seventeen. Does anyone have any new business? Item eighteen, does anyone have any old business? Commissioner Kelly?
I'd just like to inform the Commission, I'm gonna bring back the J.C. Camp abatement that had been requested and I think we gotta get some resolution on this before, before we get into budget time, so I will be bringing that back next week.
We don't need to take any motion on that or any action, it'll just be put on next week's agenda, correct?
Right. Right.
Any other old business? I do not believe we have any exec session today. Would I like a motion to adjourn? So moved. Second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes to adjourn.